We have public hearing number one, proposed city of Portland revolving loan fund programs. Sewer, storm, water service repair, replacement program, and sidewalk repair replacement program. Anybody here to speak to that? Then, both city of Portland resolution loan fund programs, sewer, storm, water service repair, replacement program, and sidewalk repair replacement program. Going the third time, proposed city of Portland revolving loan fund programs, sewer, storm, water service repair, replacement program, and sidewalk repair replacement program. Okay? We have somebody online? Did you click on mute for her? Did she click on mute? Click on mute.
She just said that it was an accident.
Okay. All right. That said, we propose a public hearing. All over. Councilmember Scott.
Here.
Councilmember Silment. We're absent. Councilmember Pennella.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Here.
Councilmember Beckwood.
Present.
Councilmember Michaels.
Yeah.
We're going to all stand this.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could get a moment of silence or reflection for the homelessness that we're dealing with currently. Thank you. Pardon me, to the floor, we have signed up Pam Barton.
Hello, for those of you who don't know me, I am Pam Barton, thirty-eight years CPD records, retired. To some regards, the retiree health insurance benefits, opt-in is the only way to go. For me, there are too many unanswered questions. An example, if they move eligible people where the advantage plan in City Blue Cross Blue Shield and consortium goes away at that point, if you opt out, the seven year left would know insurance coverage. If you had the only plan, retiring person switched to advantage plan, Blue Cross Blue Shield consortium would no longer cover family because it wouldn't exist for the retiree. I don't care, other departments and unions love the plan, I care about all of us being able individually have a choice. We, law enforcement, fire, water, et cetera, earn the benefit we have, it was not given to us. In addition, serving the community for a combined of hundreds of years, we have also contributed to city and local businesses by paying mortgages, rent, taxes, shopping, eating local, volunteering, et cetera. Beyond help of our end of the bargain, the city needs to hold up theirs. You're dealing with a vulnerable entity and fixing costs that affected in healthcare we received into the retirements and peace of mind, with the possibility of enforcing something that could blow budgets, when not being able to eat, pay bills, housing, or get for health outcomes, by not being able to see their own doctors or being able to afford care. This important to all of us, and even if we are not all eligible age at this point in time, needs to be opt-in only, thank you.
Thank you. Rick McMon.
Good evening, I appreciate the opportunity to speak again. I'm going to kind of keep this short and sweet because I think everybody here knows what our positions are, mine in particular. I've done a lot of research on the program. My personal opinion is, I do not think it's going to benefit the retirees. I'm Medicare eligible right now, I'm Medicare. The, all the people that I've talked to basically warned me to stay away from an advantage type program, even a group plan such as being presented. I do understand that the mayor believes in it wholeheartedly, and maybe there's other people in this room that do as well, and that did a very good job of presenting their program to us. However, everything I read, everything I, all my research comes up with the same conclusion. Program we have right now is a Cadillac program, and it's described across the country as a Cadillac program, and we know that. We've had many thousands of dollars worth of medical bills, hundreds of thousands of dollars throughout my fellow retirees that have all been paid with no contribution on our part. I do not think that this other program is going to be that type of program that's going to guarantee those benefits. Again, this is my opinion based on my research. My strongest opposition is to the way it's being presented to us by the mayor, that it's an opt-out program. In other words, everybody will automatically be on the program unless you opt out. And the reason for that is I sent you folks an email. This contractually guaranteed earned benefit that we got by not using sick time, by working for many years for the city of Portland, earned by us, could be lost very simply from one of these reasons. What if a retiree for some reason doesn't receive the letter, somehow forgets to respond? We're old folks, okay? Not everybody is a hundred percent. Things happen. What if a retiree is currently not able to understand or comprehend a new plan as a result of physical or mental illness, or perhaps they're in an assisted living situation as a result of being disabled or unable to care for themselves? These folks are going to fall by the wayside because they're going to be automatically in a program, they're not going to have a choice. And it's, again, my strong opinion that it's being presented backwards, it should be an opt-in if you'd like to participate in a program. Otherwise, we stay where we are with this benefit that we earned, and that we all, all of us retirees agree is the best solution for our medical concerns and for our insurance purposes. I'm also concerned with the fact that the mayor had offered up having different agencies come in to compare plans. Office of the Aging to come in and maybe give us advice on what kind of plans would be the best. I've not heard from them or seen where there's a meeting scheduled with those folks. Having a consortium come in that we currently services our health plan through Blue Cross Blue Shield, Mexelis, I've not heard where there's a meeting set up for those folks either. The only ones we've heard from are the ones that stand in benefit from the program, and that's F, not only the insurance company but the broker firm in Syracuse, which is fronting the insurance for the company at. That being said, again, I think that the general consensus of most of the retirees that I've spoken to personally are that they're not interested in a program. I understand it's going to save the city a tremendous amount of money, but at what cost to us? This benefit that we earned is ours, and we want to keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Barnes.
Hello, everybody. I'm Kathy Barnes, and some of you might know me as Vanessa, that's the official name. My story is, I'm going to give you personal stuff from, for our insurance. Two years ago, I got a headache and was diagnosed with a bone. I started chemo, went through the chemo, and then was done with that in March of twenty-one. And two weeks later, I had a heart attack. I was the air from Ithaca to Rochester for open-heart surgery, saved my life. That trip alone was eighty thousand dollars, seventy-nine, nine, nine, nine. And it got paid for by the insurance between Medicare and insurance, it was paid for. I then went to, what happened was, the chemotherapy had played games with my vascular system. So there was a heart attack which I am fine from now, but then also got both legs, I ended up having to have arteries and both legs replaced. And so St. Joe's is my new timeshare. And between all the preauthorizations and the doctors that I chose, I have not paid a cent. The only thing that denied me was a wheelchair, and we picked one of the kidneys for ninety-nine dollars. Other than that, for two years now, of just misery, I haven't had to pay a dime, I haven't had to worry about filling out any forms or anything like that. I want the insurance that I have, and you're going to have to prove to me that anything different would be as good as or better. And so I would want the opt-in version two, to do it that way, and I've been once. I don't want an annual roll. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Tom Brady.
My name is Tom Brady, retired from the Portland City Police Department after twenty-two years of service. I have to say that, since my retirement, I had some health issues as well, two-time cancer survivor, dropped fifty-eight pounds on cancer. I'm not going through thirty-seven treatments of high-octane radiation and chemotherapy. Beat the hell out of me, I beat the hell out of it. Everything that I went through, insurance coverage was great, spot-on, no complaints whatsoever. You're talking, to give up to almost fifty bucks after that, I didn't have to take out paper one, anyways. How to change all this over into a new program? Is that something I want to get into? Absolutely not. Okay, it's going to be confusion for me. Seventy-one years old, going strong, I hit the gym, I do what I can do. Right now, folks, I feel like I'm eighty-one years old, okay? I'm a little concerned about the opt-out, opt-in terms being used. And what bothers me is, the way I see it, the mayor is, we're going to get opted out of our current coverage into the new advantage plan, and we can go back into it if we don't want to stay into that new plan, and why are we even opted out? We can't stand, just stay right into it. To move us around like that, leaves a lot of questions. Are we going to be able to get back into that? I don't see any guarantees there. How about the coverage under our contract? Is that going to continue? I seem to think that if this goes away, we have something new. What we did with the city in our contract is right out of order. And for all that good faith bargaining, it's small, there's nothing going on. So I'm against all this. That's just me personally, some people may have a different take on it, but I for one have to tell you, I told the mayor, it's a communication, that I don't want my insurance touched, and that's what I keep it the way it is. And I echo everything that the people here have been saying, same feelings for it. So, you know, we may want some serious benefits, but I can understand saving a buck here. I got to save a buck, too. Our price on our insurance goes up for those. Family plan is no longer in place, individual plans, things get messed up and hurt. Have you proven to me that this advantage plan through that is any better? No. I see no proof of that whatsoever that appears. I am a living proof of our insurance will be cruel. Works. As Kathy said, too, it works, it's defined by us, and I'm sure nobody else is going to have it because I simply stay there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mayor's report. The mayor's report, certainly we have line one on with a construction on, we've run into some issues here and there, but overall, we're beginning to mitigate it, and I've driven everybody to the website to drive the traffic, and it seems to be helping, so appreciate all this support from everybody outside and inside, we've been working on that, and you can take care of the little needs that are necessary. We also have an introduction tonight, two firefighters, the firefighter, chief of approach, and we have Douglas Medler, I'm sorry, and Patrick DeHulle. Patrick, see them graduate. Mayor and I went to see them graduate Auburn Academy and make progress, so it was time for you guys to meet.
Good evening, and as the mayor states, these are the two new firefighters, if you recall, we go back to February, March, when the council approached the council about some restructuring of the code office and the need for firefighters, and were gracious enough to recognize that, and these are the two fine gentlemen that we brought on. As mayor said, they recently went to the Auburn Fire Department, went through recruit class for nine weeks, and they've gotten out of that, they graduated, and now they're doing a lot of in-service time here in Portland, with battalion chief taking them, and getting acclimated to Portland, how about that? You know, tying a knot's tying a knot, but of course, in Portland, we've got to do it different, so that's why the battalion chief's taking care of that. So, they're here doing that, they're also going through their code enforcement training right now. There's six weeks of in-service training that they're going to have to go through to get them certified as code enforcement officers, and there'll be other things they're doing. So, they've already been over with Captain Everett to do some stuff in the code office to get kind of acclimated to that, but when all is said and done, they will be assigned over there to start picking up these pieces, and we've already picked up quite a lot, but they're going to be there, that's going to be their assignment, as code enforcement officers to help with that program, and also, obviously, firefighters, that, as we've been busy here in the last month, that'd be put to work in that aspect, too. So, first off, Pat DeHulle, he comes from Binghamton, is now the assistant chief for Binghamton Fire Department, so deep roots in the fire service. Doug Medler, he actually became a volunteer in McGraw, moved away from McGraw in Moravia, but also has roots in the fire service. They're passionate about being here, and as I said, we bring them here at some point when we could, so you can see the two new faces, and we're proud of them and where they are, and looking forward to the future, so, thank you.
Welcome, guys.
Thank you.
And Chief Reynolds, would you want to make a few statements on the campus next tomorrow?
I just want to take a moment to invite all the county counselors over to the firefighter for day camp tomorrow. Tomorrow's our little kid day, we're going to have between a hundred and fifty and two-hundred kids between the ages of three to eight pass through the camp during the day. We've got five different stations set up for them, it's broken up, morning, afternoon. If everything plays well with our game plan tomorrow, helicopter will be landing in the middle of Soggy Park between eleven fifteen and eleven thirty, all the kids will get an opportunity to meet a flight paramedic, flight nurse, and a pilot, one-on-one questions. Typically, the children are allowed up in the ship, is what they're referred to it as, and they touch every single thing, and then the pilot does a fifteen or twenty-minute pre-flight before he takes off. So the morning group actually gets to watch the helicopter land, gets a one-on-one experience with them. The afternoon group comes in about twelve-thirty, they'll start with a helicopter tour, meet the staff there, they watch the helicopter take off, so. Love to have you guys stop by, if you want, we'll put you in the ladder truck or the fire truck, do all the stations the kids are. So it starts at eight AM and goes to about noon for the first half of the day, the second half of the day kicks off about one, it goes to four-thirty, so. If you guys are available, we definitely have you stop, I'll check it out. When you see a helicopter land, it's scheduled, don't be late.
All right, thank you for that, too. All right, mayor's reports.
Got some great feedback, new stop signs in, really excited about it. There LED lights all the way around, wonderfully lit with solar power, and at a troubled intersection. Have heard from four different households that I can think of off the top of my head right now, that have said, thank you for putting those in, and they believe it's already helping to control traffic, so that's really nice. Wanted to thank the fire department as well as code for some help on a few issues over there, we've had a couple small issues with some houses, some things not being done quite right, and also, fire department stopped in, and we had, I think it covered, they go through three wards total? The gas bill?
Yes.
Yes, we had a gas bill run through three different wards. I don't believe we ever identified the truck wholly, did we? So if anybody's got any information on a green utility truck that strung gas all the way from Ward, God, what is that, five to one?
Started at seven eleven and made it all the way to twenty-one.
Yes, so, you know, they were on it, they cleaned it up, they got everything up. It was amazing how much stuff we had on the road to soak that up. I, if this was coming out of their actual gas tank, I don't know how they're going to continue to drive. If it was coming out of some other tank, you know, shame on them, if anybody has any information on that, we'd love to hear about it, it did cover a lot of the city, but I thought it was handled really well, I was fortunate enough to be able to pull over, stop, see what was going on, and I've got the download on how we were taking care of it. Guys were super fast, they did a great job, it was awesome. We've gotten some feedback on the police, I'd like to say thank you to them, as far as there's three different corners that have been identified, where people have been doing just a little bit, a little heavy on the skinny pedal, and the police have done a great job, I have not had a chance to get back to the chief yet, but a great job of slowing that down. I have heard that that stopped quite a bit, and that was, that was nice to hear. So, the city overall, our departments are responding to what people are asking for, and very happy with that in more.
So Ward Three is pretty quiet. Again, I always thank codes, some minor little issues, and Chief Sandy helped me out with just something, but overall, Ward Three is doing well, and we're quiet. First off, it was nice to see all the college alumni in town, I'm sure the restaurants in that area, hotels were happy. Fourth ward, very quiet. I was asked by a constituent from a different ward about Whitwire Pool, that it had been open and closed, and then open and closed, and he wanted to know why. And so I, I asked Nick, I called Nick, and he explained it, and then also was asked about the streetlights out of Clinton, that they don't seem very bright, they don't seem to show on the sidewalk at all, again, I talked to Nick, and he explained it all. We've noticed fewer loud, fast motorcycles going up top of the street, so thank you to the police for that. Roadwork has started on Broadway, it's going from Broadway to Cash Loop, and it'll be lovely to have a brand-new stretch of road right there. Well, yeah, but, but it'll be nice to have the road.
Just an update, I think we pretty much got a clear view of the idea when we started on the, the pack.
Yeah, AIX tool, that's now changed hands, there's homeless camp in there, got that cleaned up, there was an empty tank that was spilled in there, hasn't that been cleaned up? And their contract has been awarded, and they will be starting within the next two weeks. So that's all done, it's all set up with a landfill, and everybody's on it, so we are excited about that.
That's for sure. Other than that, just driving around, I don't, we really got to get our heads together about trash in the city, I'm not talking about the garbage collection, just trash in general, it just, I don't know, I just, it just makes me sad. I'm sure, it just says it's all over, every, I don't know, I don't understand the degree. Yeah, other than that, just some issues with some residents. Thank you.
So, as the mayor put on his Facebook page, Neyman Park is going to be possibly renovated soon, or next. We renovate soon, we're looking at, we're doing the whole park, and doing the walking traffic on the park. So, the mayor put that on Facebook, we're looking at, we're looking at funding right now, I think it's a great, all the parks have been renovated, except for Neyman Park, so. The rentals over one. So, everybody's moving ahead on that. We had the trash meeting last night, the garbage meeting, Seth, there and I, and DPW. Basically, what we're looking to do is some, January first, is to get rid of the blue bag system, we're going to go to a tote system, there'll be a garbage tote and recycling tote. It's all part of the taxes, the last forty years, we've been doing blue bags, it doesn't work anymore, so it's going to be a tote system, a lot of your taxes, there's no more, go in to get the blue bag at the grocery store, none of that. If you decide that one tote, I mean, I've used totes and Yadronex and Airbnb, and you can fit at least four garbage bags in there. So if you decide to have another tote, it's a hundred and fifty bucks, but I doubt you would need more tote for garbage. So, there's going to be an RFP on the garbage company that's going to do it. That's basically it, so we're looking forward to it, everybody's happy with it, I think the public's going to be happy with it, a little more aggravation, and that's why we pay taxes, I always thought that, now it was, the system doesn't work, so, it's going to be good.
We'll address that, all right. Mr. Thompson, I'm sorry about that. I went right to seven, I missed, missed count.
Sesame Street is still on. Three things in the fifth ward, some of the street sweepers have been out, and that's been great, getting them out throughout the ward, residents have thanked me and the city for that, there, some of the narrow streets, they did report minor complaints, and those will get over to DPW, and I'm sure they'll get resolved soon. Would like to say thank you to the mayor and Chief Sandy for starting to address some of our homeless concerns that we have, we're going to have to look further down the road to really address it, but safety for those that are homeless and safety for our residents is paramount, I believe. Mayor Steve and Chief Sandy understand that, we're looking to address that for. Lastly, I also want to thank codes for resolving some complaints that we've had in the fifth ward around grass, so, that's it. I wouldn't like to add around the trash and recycling, we did receive a robust response from the city, and within that, what I thought was really significant was that eighty-eight to ninety percent of folks that were responding were actually current blue bag users, self-identified, but eighty-eight to ninety percent were blue bag users, so it wasn't just like random, random folks that had no experience with the system, or all folks that currently use another trash service or take it direct up to the waste system. So I thought that was a positive, and it was noted that the service and the price were out of alignment, and so, I think, since forty years, thirty years, that the blue bag system has been in place, yeah, opportunities to look at changing, making some positive difference.
Thank you for that. I like to go all the way from five to eight. We had to go in order.
Just a couple things, Friday evening, I've got a real quick response to a fire round, worked right the other day, the kitchen fire, I can't believe how fast the fire department got there, and they quickly knocked it down, so just contained the kitchen there. Two other, two other things came up, one complaint regarding a homeowner having security cameras pointing, with lights on, pointing at residents. One complaint regarding a homeowner having security cameras pointing with lights on and pointing at residents' properties as well as specifically owner's property. Officer followed up with that complaint tonight and when I first told him about it, I told him that I swung by your place and I did notice two cameras pointing at the properties. And then he responded tonight. He said, well, I said, I only, I only see one. Gee, you know, I swear I saw two. So. So we started doing interviews with some of the neighbors and they said, yeah, he quickly removed one of them. And the timeframe tonight, for a minute there, I was able to see you more. But I was correct. It wasn't your cameras. And that, that issue was rectified without any, any further concerns regarding the neighbor's properties. The other issue was a, a dog that aggressively went after a, another owner dog while this individual was walking it. This dog had come off the porch, crossed the street. And went after the individual's dog. The owner walking a dog quickly grabbed the dog up at its arms to prevent any other altercations regarding the two animals. I, I did get SPCA involved and I'm just waiting to hear back from them regarding how they're gonna rectify this issue. Normally, something like this, you know, you leave it up to the, the homeowner that, whose dog wasn't violation. But the concern really is that where I live, we have a lot of seniors that are wheelchair-bound that walk their dogs at leashes. And my, my thought was that if this dog had come after one of their dogs, they wouldn't have been able to reach the dog as fast as the other individual did. So I'm hoping that something will get taken care of it. And it's not the first time this dog has gone after other dogs. So I'm just waiting to hear from the SPCA at this point. And that's all I have for the night. Thank you.
Two minutes for July fifth, twenty twenty-two. Any questions? Agenda item number one, authorize city of Portland revolving loan fund programs. Sewer, storm, water service repair, replacement program, sidewalk repair replacement program.
Resolve that the city of Portland revolving loan fund program for sewer, storm, water repair replacement. And the city of Portland revolving loan fund program for sidewalk repair replacement are hereby approved and authorized. But said program shall take effect upon the release of respected program applications and associated documentation. If it is further resolved that the city reserves right to amend any components of either program as necessary with council approval to ensure successful implementation and participation.
No, just got. Any questions? I'll just read. So what this will do, this will give the option for the owner of the property to suspend it. Be able to spread out the payment on their capital investment would be at that point. So if somebody did have money and had a sewer ladder over the place, or more importantly, if we're working on this main street project and we have buildings, we want to make sure that, or road, we want to make sure that they get that in. So we don't have to tear up the sidewalk of the street thereafter. So this will give us a little bit more leverage to force that.
Now, is the six percent interest, is that a fixed amount or is it negotiable or?
That was a, that's a fixed amount based on this resolution. As we briefly discussed the last meeting, instead of could be anything, one of those seems to be the standard car. So we kept it at that.
Okay. I think it's fair and it just, it's a little high and I would like to see, but I think it might force people to get it done. Can't afford it, we say, I was kidding. We make it too low, they'll take the whole thing.
Yes.
Linda, do you know if, how the program's going this year for the sidewalk program? Yeah. Just a rough number. I just was curious if people actually.
We expended the first amount, even how much of the second.
And then there's eleven thousand, the second twenty.
So it's, don't think you're just doing good compared to the others. Okay. Thanks.
Do you want to know where actually the sidewalks, I can get that.
No, I'm just curious, you know, some years are just set there.
It's been pretty active. We've been pushing, code office has been helping, we've been pushing and knocking on doors and trying to stand on a flyer to try to get them to take advantage of the program if they ever do. It's beneficial for sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Pannello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number two, authorize special event permit for the Empire State Challenge four mile race.
Resolve that the county council does hereby approve a special event permit, including street closure for the Empire State Challenge four mile race. To be held on July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two from ten AM to ten thirty AM.
I get a motion. Absolutely. Mr. Scott. I don't think I've heard run this. Anybody else?
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Pannello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number three, appoint records retention officer.
Resolve that the county council does hereby designate Kerry Lynch, registrar in the office of the city clerk as records management officer for the city of Portland.
And again, this is due to the moving of positions to the firefighter reempty position and now she's.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Pannello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number four, authorize salary for the city clerk.
Resolve that the county council authorizes the city clerk to be paid twenty thousand dollars and that funds be transferred to the office of the city clerk budget line, A one four two zero dash five one zero 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 personnel services.
On motion.
Ms. Pannello and Ms. Lane, before we move any farther, I just want to do a correction on the fifth whereas. And this is my fault, the totaling of fifteen thousand dollars, the actual total amount for those statements is twelve thousand zero five eight. So twelve thousand three hundred and eighty-six. Please, is okay with that motion, twelve thousand nine?
Absolutely.
Twelve zero five. I just want to clarify that. I got that today and I noticed that. Any discussion?
I think it's well overdue. Amy's a hard worker. City clerk works very hard and is very respected in the community. So a lot of hours for five thousand dollars, you know, if you get a spot on it.
Yeah, it is. I agree.
Thank you. I think it's more important to note that the charters, what was done in the previous, that the previous fact wasn't appreciated either. Since we established the charter rules, whether you did or not.
Yeah, the, the salary was comparable with other cities, the size of the court.
The new salary. You okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Pannello.
Definitely.
Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number five, authorize application for funding to update the city's comprehensive plan under the smart growth grant program through the solidified funding, funding application process.
Resolve that the city of Portland authorizes Toma Development to resubmit an application on the city's behalf for funds through the smart growth program to update the city's comprehensive plan.
Mr. Scott, Mr. Beckwith? Yeah, this is our comprehensive plan. It's obviously behind and dated and we need to get that up to date. A little bit costly, but I think it'd be worth the time to address. Roll call.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Pannello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number six, authorize applications for two, twenty twenty-two environmental protection fund parks development grant for the Randall Park improvements projects.
Resolve that the city of Portland is authorized and directed to accept environmental protection fund arc development grant funds in the amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars for the project described in the grant application. If it is further resolved that the city of Portland is authorized and directed to agree to the terms and conditions of the master contract with the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation for such Randall Park improvement, improvement project. If it is further resolved that the city of Portland is authorized and directed to agree to the terms and conditions of any required deed of easement granted to the office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation that affects title to real property owned by the municipality and approved by the grant funds, which may be duly recorded, public access covenant, conservation easement and/or preservation covenant. And be it further resolved that the county council delegate signing authority to execute the master contract and any amendments thereto, and any required deed of easement and any other certifications to the mayor.
Motion, Mr. Michaels last name?
Mr. Thompson. It's right in your corridor, it's both. So this is a great thing, looking great to get this project off the ground. So hopefully we'll get some responsive actors. We're getting it, right. Hold on for it. Any else?
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Pannello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number seven, authorize mortgage subordination and agreement.
Resolve that the county council subordinates its mortgage instrument number two thousand eighteen dash zero four four eight five recorded on August seventh, two thousand eighteen with this Portland's county clerk. Said subordination to facilitate a home equity loan with CFCU in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for said residence and further authorizes the mayor to sign this subordination agreement for the same.
Mr. Carpenter. Questions?
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Pannello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number eight, authorize application for twenty twenty-two water quality improvement program, wastewater treatment improvement grant for the city of Portland wastewater treatment facility.
Resolve that the city of Portland is authorized and directed to apply for a water quality improvement program grant and if approved, to accept these funds in the amount not to exceed five million dollars for the proposed six point six eight million dollar project described in the grant application with the city providing twenty-five percent grant match. And be it further resolved that the city is authorized and directed to agree to the terms and conditions of the master contract with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for such Portland wastewater treatment facility improvement project. And be it further resolved that the county council delegate signing authority to execute the master contract and any amendments thereto and any other certifications to the mayor.
This line? Yeah, so this one, if you remember, early in the year, we did a twenty-four thousand dollar grant to, to see what to do, study. This, to look at this grant and this is to help with our nitrate issue. Do you have some numbers there? That our nitrates are currently causing us. It looks like if we, if we implement this program at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year at the current of the price. We had to wait to get the, the reason we're so late to get this grant application is we're waiting for the D C to respond back to us. Now that they respond back, so hopefully we can make the investment at some point to make this so we're not sending those nitrates out and providing a permanent application. I think you were all giving up to scripts.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Pannello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number nine, authorize funds to support downtown promotional initiatives.
Resolve that the city council hereby authorizes the expenditure of up to ten thousand dollars to support downtown promotional programs, events and activities.
I'll second.
Mr. Scott, Ms. Pannello, just a couple of things. Andy, you read it right here. From account number A one two five zero. It goes to account A seven five five zero five four zero five zero zero. The last one, yeah. Last, we can go to. Eight seven five five zero five four zero five zero zero. And so this ten thousand dollars would be authorized to, you know, grants, to promotional, to literature, to now there, we're, the art committee's putting together a plan to, you know, do backward, to paint a bunch of murals backwards so we can put them up to block some of the areas to just add some artwork to while we're doing this construction. Those are some creative innovative ways to try to stimulate people to come downtown and still go to businesses like King Drunks or Color Me Red or, you know, have difficulty with traffic that's coming. So this could give us a little bit of a way to make those happen.
Needs to be done.
Questions?
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Pannello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Item number ten, authorize memorandum of understanding with the county of Portland or city courts please.
Resolve that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a memorandum of understanding with the county of Portland for relocation of the Portland city court to the Portland county courthouse.
So this, this initiative started many years ago to try to get this to happen. I guess it's county can't move forward until they get an M O U from us. So they've been holding off designing this for the last few years till someone designed it from the city. So that's, I'm not sure why we're delaying, but we, we are in that process now of hoping that that happens. I remember talking to Judge Meldrum when I was at the county chair eighteen years ago about making this happen. He was a little resistant, but in the end, thought it would be best. So it would help us. I was trying to look at our pants as the four pockets, city, right, county, state and federal. That's all your taxing in your pockets. And, you know, here we're paying our state protector, you know, regards there to protect this court and it could be there too. It helps the district attorneys, defenders, everybody's in one area. They can do, even the attorneys that are over there themselves. So it makes sense, but we have to provide them a space legally. The only thing we came out of the space here is they pass a modest fee to rent for utilities, cover utilities costs that are incurred. He costs those kind of things. So the building would need to be upgraded. Any other questions?
We will have a little bit more expensive ticket than what we have in the city over there. So we're like, should I bring them up here now?
With any, the only expense we'll have, especially with this, the cost of renovating this building, we're tearing it down.
Well, I understand that. I'm saying now that somebody, the police department, the city police, just to bring them up here rather than, you know, we get people over there.
Yeah, but remember that we try to hold, try to be held at that jail. So only for, we would probably give a space here for arraignment anyways. We're doing it so that it would be easy so they could do a quick arraignment on the police. Yeah, so they could do a quick arrangement. But otherwise they're kept at the jail. That's the idea.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Sillman. All right, excuse me. Councilmember Pannello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number eleven, appoint member to the environmental advisory committee.
Resolve that John Bush is hereby reappointed. Resolve that John Bush is hereby reappointed by the common council as a member of the city of Portland environmental advisory committee.
Mr. Thompson? Mr. Carpenter? We met last night in the environmental committee, last night, first time he was present, but he's not. There's no action taken. And it's, it's a pretty active group, but pretty exciting, so he has to, he has to run it down the bike, so I'm excited about this guy. Great vision. Sure. Right.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Fennello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Then item number twelve, authorized court decision ordering judgment directs, directed reassessment stipulation of settlement of Conqueror Portland L P versus City of Portland A T A.
Resolve that the mayor, or alternatively, corporation councils hereby authorized to execute a stipulation as agreed to by all parties named in the litigation, which will provide an amended assessment of Conqueror of Portland Associates L P property consistent with the parameters required in the applicable real property tax law sections as ordered by the court.
Good motion.
I'll motion.
So, Mr. Carpenter. So I think Mr. Meldrum addressed this last meeting, that we're trying to get this resolved. Anybody have any questions to bring them up if necessary?
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Fennello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda item number thirteen, authorize alcoholic beverage consumption during arts off main events.
Resolve that the common council does hereby grant permission for the petitioned area, for a petitioned area for the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages, conditioned on sales being made by a caterer with approved permits to sell alcohol at the events off main, art, excuse me, arts off main, and excuses the Portland City Police Department from enforcing section two oh eight dash two consumption or possession of alcoholic beverages in public within the petitioned area at this event.
Mr. Beckwith. Mr. Carpenter. Scott, this G N O, they're gonna have to bring in application to you, because you have to sign on both of these, as the representative of the city.
Right.
And so you're aware of that, or make sure they're aware of that, they can't send anything up to the mayor's signature.
Right.
In fact, if we ran into that. It's good to have the arts on main, and they're actually good behind the central app, behind the McNeil area, that parking lot area. So it'd be kind of different to have that, maybe, to have some more stuff downtown, instead of have that walk across the warehouse. It's good to have that, for sure.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Fennello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda item number fourteen, authorize alcoholic beverage consumption during the Great Portland Pumpkin Fest.
Resolve that the common council does hereby grant permission for petitioned area for the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages, conditioned on sales being made by a caterer with approved permits to sell alcohol at the Great Portland Pumpkin Fest, and excuses the Portland City Police Department from enforcing section two oh eight dash two consumption or possession of alcoholic beverages in public within the petitioned area at this event.
I so move. Mr. Scott, Ms. Lane? Questions on this?
I just, for years, we did that, then we got weak in it, and I think that brings out a lot of people, as to, you know, there's a lot of families there, but it also brings out a lot of outsiders. They go to the beer tent, and now, I think it's, it's good to have that.
Last two years, we didn't have one. Prior two years, I did the beer tent. There was no problem at all.
Right.
I mean, back years ago, it was.
I, I have counter experience to that. I don't know. Where, at, at least one year, I, I actually loved the pumpkin fest. I absolutely loved it. Great family event, great for the city. However, there was one year where there was a beer tent. And there was some, um, vomiting on the sidewalk in front of all the kids in the midst of defenders, and it was very unclassy. And not a great look for the city, and that, and that, with you. So, I'm wondering if there's any way that we can temper how much is, is available and given to, you know, some of the folks that, you know, that are gonna frequent that.
We're, we're sad to hear that, but we'll make sure that's enforced, that we can keep an eye on that, the police department will keep an eye on it, to make sure that.
A lot of that, I think, was driven by the fact that they were doing flights. Yeah, the last two years I had, it was, you buy your drinks, it was no, there was no, I mean, I'm speaking for myself, but there was no, like, fifty for ten or whatever, you know, or you buy a glass, you keep it filled all day, you want to drink, you buy it.
Yeah, I think there was a year, maybe they had, you buy it, and you get ten wine.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I think first chance, they could have fifty for ten, but.
I'm just saying, it's, it really solved a lot of the issue.
Yeah. Okay, we'll make sure that that's, we can make sure that that's part of the condition, but I know some of the downtown vendors are gonna tie something to, to try to lights downtown, and, you know, try to tie some other events in downtown, try to get this thing to grow.
Yeah.
It's pretty, you keep pushing it, and have that wagon ride, go off the fairgrounds, and have more stuff out there.
Mm-hmm.
Have a pumpkin throwing contest.
You have any idea who was gonna be chewing the beer vendor on that, you know, who was?
Could be the vendor, the beer vendor on that? I do not, I do not know that answer, that's up to the committee. Okay. The, the committee will take care of all that. Who is the committee?
Just enough, why, make sure they let the vendors know, they gotta get help, food as well, because one guy, last year, the last time we did, a guy go all the way down from Rochester. And didn't get us from that, and he got his truck still, he had a car call there all day, and went with courthouse park, and he can tell me that.
The person that's running is a clerk of the legislature, so he's super competent, super. Sorry, no concern about that at all.
Yeah.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Fennello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Then on the item number fifteen, appoint member to youth bureau advisory board.
Resolve that the common council does hereby approve appointing Lori Hogan to act on the youth bureau advisory board.
Carpenter, Mr. Beckwith. Questions?
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Fennello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Discussion items, Parker School Ad Hoc Planning Committee.
I'll speak on that. Just a quick update, that they were having a meeting tomorrow with the architect firm under Rochester, so I have more of an update for you, hopefully, we follow that, so.
Trash and Recycling Ad Hoc Advisory Committee. Mr. Carpenter updated a little bit in his board report. Yeah, and so the last details that will have to be done of that is the dumpster aspects of how that dumpster's gonna work out, and then we'll bring forth resolution for everybody to look at, and start to look at how that.
That'll include the details for the business district too, right?
Yes, correct. We did, we did talk about that, and we have to find out some language in that. Town and gown ad hoc planning committee. A quick update there, we had to suspend the college. So we moved the event back. I did hear from the, uh, Dr. Good about yesterday, and they were doing a follow-up meeting regarding the waterworks building, so they run that by their staff, and pretty excited about some of the aspects of the, like, that's great ideas, so.
Has that been approved by, I don't know, who would have to, to permit the E K A?
Yes, yeah, so as far as using the building, no, that's exactly, that's not an issue with that, but as far as, uh, when we go to do the trails and walk the trails and do all that, all that has to be done, we, we have a permit for our, how our water shed is managed. So we have to make sure that we have to follow certain protocols to make that happen. Can't just go in there, pull these trails and say this is where everybody's going.
Because I'm, I'm not too sure I want people wandering through where our city water supply is.
Their wells, remember, and they're very deep.
Okay.
And that's the security part, you have to make sure, like, that, we have to, we're talking about wells inside the building, the security aspects, but we'll certainly take that and make sure that those concerns are valid, for sure, you know, but, but we'll make sure that those concerns, that, that security's the most important part.
So, hey, you gotta remember, what goes in the ground here, maritime drinking, what they do in home, we're drinking.
So I should be more worried about.
Yeah, exactly, yes. Good point.
Yeah, so, so we used to, the youth bureau used to host a, uh, cross-country ski trail setup.
Yeah, and the college just, does use it for their, they run through it, for their cross-country running, and then also there's the, the baseball team, the current baseball team, I think they do a lot of hayman. So there's other events that do go on, so I think we can make it so, maintain it better, and I think give us an opportunity, utilize that fifty three acres, right, in the city. That's, yeah, but certainly those concerns, we, we have the security, safety, you know, water, you know, protection, that would not be something you would want to have. So, but, and, and the other town gown stuff, we'll follow up with, after that, they're setting up a bunch of different ones, anybody wants to be, I want to spell that water tours. I think they set up a bunch too, as well. Like, I must be a part of that, but now. The autism walk, autism walk is August thirteenth at Dexter, and that's twelve to five. So I'll just give you a heads up on that, that's gonna be a great event, there's no blocking the streets or anything, so we're all gonna keep it there, so, so, it's an awesome idea. We work with firefighters and battalion chiefs working on that, to help them, I think, with the youth bureau and Chief Freeman. Entirely health insurance. Put on the agenda to have these discussions that we had, and thank you everybody for your comments, we are having another follow-up meeting on the twenty-sixth at six P M. So I encourage everybody to come and do that. A couple of things.
Is it gonna be here?
Uh, yes, right here, yes, sir. So.
I, I would just like to support the opt-in as opposed to the opt-out. As, as someone who retired from the Portland City School District and have probably the same insurance, I would not want anyone mess with it in any way. And, and the, the opt-out part, as I believe someone said, you lose the card, you lose the letter, the letter doesn't get sent to you. You've moved, it doesn't follow you. I, I really strongly believe that it should be an opt-in, not an opt-out.
Understood, and I'd just like to address a couple of other items over there. First of all, this is not a mayor versus you guys, or the mayor versus everybody, so, so I make that clear. I took an oath in our responsibility to maintain and try to do what we can to save city taxpayers' money, do what we can, not at the, not at anybody's expense, I would not do that. I appreciate everybody's service, and I would not want that to happen, so I'm gonna clarify that, first of all. And second of all, either the opt-in, opt-out, certainly discuss that, that's why this, discussions, we talk about what is best, you guys are, be the ones voting, not me. I certainly just try to organize them to put it together. We have one point five million dollars here, it's not to harm anybody, to free anybody. Technically, legally, we could just do this, okay, but I recognize that everybody gets concerned, because in the contract, it says equal to or better than, this is better than. So, again, as far as the consortium, you know, the consortium can't offer anything like this, and now it's created a big representative consortium. We've priced out different, uh, programs, even with our current health insurance, out of the consortium, and it's less, so that's gonna be another topic for another day, and I'm sure everybody's gonna get worked up about that as well. But again, we have to be prudent and responsible with, with the taxpayers' money, and that's all I'm trying to do, not trying to hurt anybody, or just, just concern anybody in any way. But, you know, they, I'm okay with having that as a choice, you know, the idea of opting in and opting out is, you know, sometimes, it's even like, we're gonna talk about resolutions later when you're voting, sometimes it's easier for people just to say, you know, this is too complex, I'm just not gonna do it. So I, that, that's the idea of opting, you know, using that opt, as an option, that's the only purpose for that option. So, I mean, I, I don't wanna lose people because of that concern, because, and you could say, the argument could be, if we save two hundred fifty thousand dollars, it's still two hundred fifty thousand dollars, but I look at it as like, if this wasn't better, you know, there's people that have mentioned about paying their co-pay, goes away, you have to pay that co-pay. There was nothing that was illustrated or discussed in anybody's surgery or anything that wouldn't be covered in this, that they're not overpaying for insurance laws in any step of the way, that's been discussed and interviewed everyone. You know, we offer that to be that wholeheartedly, if it wasn't everything that you're saying should be, we give them the option out. Write that in the resolution, that's certainly after this board, and that's what you're here for, and that's what we're here to discuss, so that's the purpose of this discussion, so I'm up for putting that in that document as well, so.
You have to put in, in the.
Opt-in, opt-out, we're, that's what we're discussing, that's the whole point of this meeting, is to discuss that.
Okay.
And so we can opt-in, opt-out, we can say, if, if you do opt-in, and you don't want it, you have that right, always have that right to go back out. We will put that in that resolution, we would not wanna have that, you know, we can go through it for a year, try it, I'd encourage you to do it, there's many other people that have done it. You know, the Bington, they had the same situation, and they, they've been in it for a couple of years now, and, you know, you get some of them to compare, the testimonies, the talk, and letter from the controller, discussion about that it was successful, that it worked well, and everybody's happy with it, doing well. I mean, and again, it's all slighted, and I get why people could say, all right, I can get, if I really want something to happen, I'm like, I'm like, you know, if I'm gonna get references, if you ask me for references, I'm not like, you get the references, they're gonna say something good about me. I like to give you the references, and that, but if you say, give me the past ten references, that's when you win, right? So, and that's, that's a standard trait, and I wouldn't, I'm not about that research system, do that, but I respect the concern, I respect people's, you know, concern on change, especially when it comes to something like that, especially when it's hard to understand, but understand that, oh, this is not me versus them, I'll not take that on. This is us doing the best we can to mitigate what this, this cost, increased cost that it's done to the community. Now, this is something that hasn't been available, and wasn't available twenty years ago, and thirty years ago, even, five years ago. This is something that just came on the marketplace, it's something new, and it's something that works. It could change, it could be better, it could end up changing and not be as good, we would be willing to change that, make those adjustments when we necessary. So at any point, that's not, any intention of anybody, I'm sure that's on this board, especially me. So, that is not, that is not the case, so, whatever information is needed for that twenty-sixth, we'd be glad to give it to, so we can educate as much as we can. C S D A agrees that this is a good option, the officer of the agent can't believe, it is a great thing, that's a, whatever, whatever testimonies would be from them, or whatever you might need, whatever the case, again, I don't know whether relevance of that, you're still not gonna feel comfortable, I don't want you to not feel comfortable.
Officer of the agent, that came up earlier, are we able to get someone from there to come in and, and address the group?
I can ask them to write something or come in and do that, for sure.
I think they would, they would go along with that.
They come the twenty-sixth, then we can have them at that information, I'll, I'll try.
Everything I've heard from them has been positive, I just think it would be nice to pass that along, to either, you know, make people.
And I think, I encourage people to go to, with it, my, I spoke, what I spoke there was, I encourage you to go one-on-one with them, to talk to them specifically about your concern, because every case is different, it is very complicated, and it gets very complicated, but I think they'll give you that information in a much better way, and go through that detail. They're completely neutral, they're paid by us as taxpayers, can affect people to do what's best for, for our agent community. And this is one of those ideas that's to do that, so if it could save people money, it could do that.
I did go over to the office for the agent personally, and I sat with a very nice young woman who went through a whole bunch of, of different options, and told me, oh, it wouldn't cost me anything, and I, thankfully, and I wasn't going to change anything that day anyway, a person I know who works there stopped and said, you know, what are you doing? And I explained, and she said, do not let go of your school insurance, which is the hoopla across, and she, so that was, I was told that by someone who works at the office for the agent, so.
But this was, that was this program?
It was, she had gone through a list of programs.
Yeah, but they, yeah, that's, that's not the same.
I just, I don't know why anyone would say, you know, I wanna, I wanna change my insurance, when Kathy Barnes hasn't had to pay anything, to take a chance on something else. To take a chance on something else, where you might have to pay, you might have to start paying, why would anybody wanna do that?
You will not have to pay, and I just wanna clarify that, what really upsetting is that we were paying all the insurance, and I'm gonna tell you that ninety percent of what was, and those procedures of those people you're talking about, they, it wouldn't have touched, it wouldn't have touched our insurance, it didn't touch our insurance. Medicare covered it, all those items that we found Medicare covered. Okay, and then from there, the supplemental will pick up, if, if you needed a second, or if you needed, or a third, or, I mean, not a second, but if you needed something outside of the ordinary, that would cover it. The rest of it is covered anyway, so, and there are some supplemental plans that I would never go near. And you, they, they, there are really not good, and that's where it is the bad thing, that's not the case.
So I, I, I wholeheartedly believe that we have officers that care for the city, and we have to continue to care for them, and any other worker for the city. Same point in time, if folks wanna have an opportunity to switch, opt-in, opt-out, what have you, there needs to be a breakdown of the silo conversations. There needs to be real dialogue, and folks have the opportunity to hear from the consortium, to hear from Pet Dog, or whoever else that's available for, for any programs moving forward. Because the consortium, to my knowledge, if we're talking about, the consortium offers different advantage plans as well. And so have a, as a public institution, have an open dialogue, break down the silos, get everything on board.
And we have done that, we've done numerous meetings about that, with that, and the consortium cannot give us, uh, equal to or better than, so I can't propose that. Why would I propose something that's not equal to or better than? That's what they were awarded in their contracts, that's what they agreed to do. I can't give them something that's half as what, it saves us half as much money, which is not, I mean, but it doesn't give us anything we have.
I understand what you're saying, you've talked to them, I think you have that consortium talk to the officers, so they can understand that they're hearing from you, they need to hear from the consortium. I think that's, if you're not, if you don't own the consortium, they have a fair, they should have a fair shot at selling what they have, not just what we're listening to is that, that's what they want to listen to.
But I can't put that, if they don't offer the same or better than, why, I can't propose that, we can't. So even, they would come here, and they would give you a half a car without tires, I can't.
I don't think the consortium is a brokerage firm, are they?
No.
They're also offering the current Blue Cross program.
They are, offer our current Blue Cross Blue Shield program, but they, they're, they don't, they can't opt, I would go with them if they had this option to be able to do that, but they do not have.
So my conversations, well, I've seen some emails from the consortium, and from the director there, she said that if we move and leave this plan, anybody that's playing, the cost of the current employees in the city of Portland, the costs go up.
That's not true.
Well, that's what they said, and she, have you talked to her at all?
Yeah.
Costs, well, the costs go up, and the costs go up through anybody that's in the consortium, other businesses. So, I mean, you gotta be concerned about current employees, not just retirees, but current employees, their costs. They go fifty bucks extra a pay period, because you have forty people leave, that's a cost, but you're saving one point five million, that's what you're saying.
And, and it's not, it is not gonna, there would be no reason for that to go up. If you look at the consortium, and beyond that, the consortium puts work paying for, we've done a quick bid out, and get it for less than what we're paying for it now. They've put together a program and held millions of our dollars together to do that, that's a whole other complex conversation. So I don't know that that's necessarily the, the correct place to be, to, to utilize that consortium. The first year I got in, it was good, but they kept putting money away, kept taking our money, and we never saw any difference in that.
As you said, they haven't, you told me that before.
We don't have a voting member in there, we can't make decisions, we can't have discussions, it's not the best what it is.
So what I, what I believe is that we should have, going in, you'd be on the back into the insurance plan, and it's optimal. I go carpenter, come to the city of Portland, says, I want to get that plan, I'm the employee, I'm retired, I want that plan. We don't need a mailing, a filing, a mailing, missing mail, somebody's got dementia, is in the hospital, okay, we don't need something like that, because you're gonna cause, that's gonna be more problems than just being upfront to say. Tom Brady's coming to the city of Portland and saying, I don't have that plan. Now, here's a, here's a, something in the mail, Tommy, you're gonna opt out, ah, Tom's on vacation, he did not opt out, missed the mail, you know how mail is now, all of a sudden he misses the mail, you opt him in, you can't vote, or maybe the laws change, you can't opt back into it. That's a problem.
That's not, that's not the case, but we just said we would change that, we would opt, we opt, opt in if that's necessary, that's what the government is the point. For the resolution to introduce it, to get everybody's attention to discuss it, that resolution is just fit as such, that can be changed. Change it for another way, that's necessary, a problem. And we can also say, we can also offer a financial incentive to try to get people to sign on too.
They, they, uh, the last mayor did that, remember that, Tommy, he offered twenty thousand dollars to sign off this plan to current, and nobody took that one. And he took that, because I'm not gonna give, I'm not gonna take twenty thousand dollars, and I'm giving up a four hundred thousand dollar benefit.
Right, it's, it's.
But that's not the same thing.
My insight was that individual, particularly at twenty thousand, invest in your weapon, use it, use it as they need it, by service. Think, think about it, twenty thousand is gonna go in for a dollar.
Right, yeah.
And I can, I can see why nobody, nobody jumped out there.
So if I may, I, I was previewed conversation early on in this with the mayor, and I said exactly this. I will not vote for a program that is going to hurt anybody, or force them to do anything that they do not wanna do. With that said, the response was nothing but concern that it will be equal to or better than, and I know it's words that we throw out there, it's legal ease. But that must have been said four or five times when considering other programs, and that's why other programs were not considered. If I feel at all when we get down to this vote, that it's gonna hurt any of our retirees who've served us, protected us, done everything for the community, I will vote no, a hundred percent. I think this is such a heated topic, people aren't hearing the concern for not just the city, because everybody goes, oh, one point five million. Yes, one point five million, would it be nice to save that, would it be nice to save more than that every single year after, would be wonderful. The mayor's first words were words of concern to make sure that it's equal to or better than. With that said, I'll vote no against something he proposes if I don't like it, but I think everybody ought to take a breath and consider learning all the options. Asking for details or information that you can't get, because it's very important, and I'm not gonna profess to understand that all the way through, and I don't understand enough to vote on it right now. If we had to vote today, I'd abstain, I just wouldn't vote, or I'd vote no. I think we need to educate more, because from what I have seen, granted, I do come from an insurance background, and it's easy to, for me to break things down. I have not read the policies cover to cover to prepare them. However, from what I've seen, when you do take the bullet points, it looks like this could be a really good option. Now, is it the very best? It may not be, maybe there's a better one, maybe there's not one at all. I think people need to understand that the concern is not just for the bottom line of the city, and this is the way the mayor has expressed it to me. The concern is for the people involved in the program, and I think what everybody is hearing is, it's a concern for the city. I have not heard him once sacrifice anybody, or desire to sacrifice anybody's wants, needs, or most important, care that they've earned for the bottom line of the city. Now, does it have to be a consideration? Of course it does, does the well-being of the people who took care of the city outweigh saving some money for the city? Boy, I'd be hard-pressed to get me to vote yes for that, that wouldn't happen. I think the people who've served the city and served it well need to be taken care of. I do understand it's heated, and I interject this for everybody to just take the breath and say, okay, maybe there's a reason certain people see things certain ways. I'm completely on the fence on this, I couldn't tell you which is better right now, and I've run a chunk of New York State for a subsidiary of Chubb. I, I get the insurance deal, I understand it. I don't know enough about it yet, so for me to say, everybody ought to vote yes, or everybody ought to vote no, right now, I don't think anybody ought to commit to a vote. I think what we ought to commit to is education to self for the people that this would affect, and educating those people for the people that sit up here, so the right decision can be made. I, I think that no decision's being made today, I think that it's gonna be a hard thing for everyone involved to do, whether we stay exactly the same or not, because there has to be considerations made. I mean, you're silly if you don't look, you just are, it's like car insurance, you don't, if you don't shop around every few years, you're probably silly for not shopping around every few years. Will you find a better deal? Maybe not, could you? Maybe, it's well worth it, and I think that education at this point is the most important thing, because I, I don't think there's a person up here who's educated enough who could vote yes or no with a clear conscience right now. And if they could, I would debate them on, they ought to do more research, because I know I need to do more. That's just kind of my interjection, it's sort of, I feel we.
We have experts, and that is, you may, again, you echoed my point, that we need to have the opportunity for more learning to occur with the experts from those organizations, or someone who is neutral, to present on this information, so that we can see it side by side. Does it equal up to, to, to one another, or is, is there some difference?
Would, would you be, what, would you wanna hire a consultant to do that, somebody independent, and that C S D A did the comparison, they did it work, but I don't know if they would be willing to sit there and do a presentation side by side to each one. I mean, certainly, that independent would do that, they're not gonna tell you lies, that what's gonna do when we do the educational series, they could sit there, they've done that, we've sat in those meetings and done one-on-one. I think during videotape, if you haven't gone there, it's certainly go to the twenty-sixth and ask those questions, but I think all that has been addressed and done. I don't know what, I mean, whatever, whatever that would look like, what, hire a consultant to, to, to look at that independently, or, I mean, you know, we're looking at apples and apples, and apples and oranges, and apples and pears, and just need to look at them and try to understand and decipher that. And again, uh, you know, if that's, if that's what the, if nobody wants to do it, and wanna walk away from the one point five million dollars, that's okay too. But I have my responsibility to put it forward, and if it wasn't no-brainer, I wouldn't sit here and argue and fight this, others haven't, because they don't want to sit here, I'm not fighting.
I'm a conservative at the same, and so I'm, I look to save money, mayor, at the same point in time. Again, I said, we, we had folks that cared about the city, and contr, and made contracts with the city. How do we honor them? By walking away from what they, we signed and what they signed.
And we, we're doing that, we're honoring that contract, that contract says equal to or better than, and this is better than.
Let's show it on the table, let's learn together and have the dialogue.
So I encourage everybody to go on the twenty-sixth, that, that education, be there, and question to have, comfortable with it. You know, as far as the opt-in and opt-out, and the discussion I have, and that's the purpose of these discussions, is to talk about, operate a financial incentive to do that, if they want to opt in. You know, because, you know, we've got one point five million dollars you can save, you wanna sacrifice somebody to try it, and we get more people, and then the following year, maybe more people will understand that they can try it. The option to opt, you know, we're able to, you know, go back at it, so I think that's the, you know, how, how do we place that back? Just difficult to walk away when, uh, when, I know it's, uh, it's all there.
Maybe that's a good, you know, maybe, uh, maybe a consultant is a good idea.
You need to get somebody in there that's not involved with either side.
Right.
Yeah, right.
I'll, I'll look into that and try to get somebody.
That would help me with the better choice, personally.
I know, I'll try, I'll get somebody in there to do that, and then, you know, again, certain companies own all their products, and they're gonna tell you it's good, right?
Right.
Do you either sign or you get up and walk?
All, they're just brokers, they're just brokers.
But I'm saying, they don't have, they don't spin the game. I mean, there's gotta be somebody.
They get financial benefit, but there's no certainty.
Right.
Why don't we ask our retirees, uh, if that's a better approach at this point? Or a consultant that's, doesn't have any stake in the game, and would certainly, uh, tell you exactly, uh, black and white, and not sugarcoated, uh, exactly where you stand.
Certainly, you open the list of what they have to say. I will object strenuously to, uh, the mayor's idea of this financial incentive. I mean, that's like dangling a carrot in front of, somebody that has fixed it, that to me is a slight fix. I don't agree with that at all. Might have some people that may have a genuine need for twenty thousand dollars, and they're not looking down the road and say, oh yeah, I'll, I'll bring on that.
I'm not awkward, I felt. I was just, I mean, it was a suggestion that we're in discussion, it's not my idea, it's a suggestion for discussion to come up with a resolve, that's what this is about. We're having a discussion amongst the board publicly, instead of doing it behind emails so everybody can hear, or everybody has to say, so we can have that discussion. That's what this is about, that's what we're here for, and, you know, sometimes they're not gonna be, always be pleasant topics, and it's not gonna be easy. But ultimately, and, and I, and again, I'll say it again, I respect your opinions, I respect your concerns, we're trying to mitigate that. So how can we mitigate that in the best way that everybody feels? You hate, hate to just throw this out, because it, because you don't understand, I mean, I get it, I get that, what do you need to understand? We've done several, uh, different meetings, we've had different ideas, different discussions, and we're talking about a consultant review, I have no problem with any of that, it's gonna cost us some money, but we'll, I, if that's the investment to do that, and get that back out, it'd be worth it.
Yep. I can get somebody from the consortium here to talk with.
And to, again, they don't have anything to offer that would be, that would be beneficial to the plan.
And we know, why, how do we know without them?
Because the benefits have to equal to or better than.
I can show you this, we could show you their proposal.
Yeah, they sent one.
So can I just read something really quick?
See, if you go up to the mic with that, be fine, if you don't mind.
Okay, so I'm Philly, Billina Brady, that's why. And what I was, I figured out here, with the city, Blue Cross Blue Shield, we have family plan. My glasses, I'm gonna try to greet this all right. Two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighteen cents a month, Tom pays thirteen percent of that, that's what he retired at. So a month we pay, or the two of us together, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars eighty-nine cents for our health insurance. Okay, so if we switch to this Aetna program, it's three hundred dollars a month each, six hundred dollars for both of us. And I did some figuring here. Okay, we have the deductible of fifty dollars each, so for Blue Cross Blue Shield, I already told you, per month, per year. For our Blue Cross Blue Shield, we pay three thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents a year. For the Aetna, we'll be paying seven thousand two hundred dollars a year, that's a big increase, a lot of money out of our pockets, which we can't afford, we're at a fixed income. So, we'll see. So right now, we're paying, I already said that, well, I took a three thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-two cents more a year for this insurance plan. And then we'll, we'll subtract the fifty-dollar deductible we check, so subtract a hundred dollars. So we're still paying three thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-two cents more a year for our insurance, our health insurance. So it's not equal to or better to, or better than, from what I see, and I went through all the different, um, coverages. A lot of our Blue Cross is exactly the same, covered in full, covered in full, and, let's see, then there was a page here with the, like, for example, office visits, Blue Cross are eighty percent coverage with Blue Cross, subject to deductible. Well, after we pay our deductibles, we don't pay anything. I've been to the doctors, I don't know how many times, and Tom, I just called three offices this morning to ask if we owe anything, no, you're set. There's no twenty percent anymore that we pay, all covered, so I don't see how this program is better to or equal than what we have right now.
I apologize, what I meant by that was, does this consortium have anything in addition to show? They don't have anything with the benefits, um, the research you've done is, is great, and that's the type of stuff we all need to continue to look at, um, because it's not going to be a blanket. Your situation is gonna be different than your situation, than X's situation, A's situation, B's situation.
But, right.
It's gonna hurt them even more.
I just wanna clarify something real quick, this is really important to the map, I don't wanna see your argument debate, that's not fair for you, but. I don't want to see your argument debate, that's not fair for you, but the, the $600 you're paying is the total premium to the city. You're paying 17% of that, so your payment per month would be $102. Just want to clarify. So that's the big difference in the map, so there, yes, that's our total premium cost for each person, $600 total for the two of you, 17% of that is $102. So I don't want to argue, I don't, I'm sorry to put you ahead, but I just wanted, I can't, it was a public, I didn't want that to go out there, and everybody's sitting there like, oh my goodness. No, not in close, and deductibles go away, co-pays go away, so none of that comes out. So again, to, to address some of the other concerns about the income, fixed income bracket, this is exactly what I'm trying to cover, this is exactly what we're trying to do. This is exactly the help that we're trying to propose to people, and it is that good, it is that simple, and, you know, like, if you hire a consultant, because I'm, I don't think it's fair to, you know, to me, to put, to have to sit here and have to defend this, when it's, it's been out there, it's been explained, it's, it's been in those meetings, it was discussed, those examples were given all the way, you know, they're documented, you know, you know, get it independent, and have them determine that, and then make those decisions from there. We're not going to, you know, obviously, I hate to give up $750,000, or whatever we're up to so far this year, of not saving, of having those savings, or giving people an opportunity to try it, so they can see the difference, and see the financial impact that they would have. But with that said, I would like to just continue on to, you know, get the proper education out there, because clearly, it's not there.
Do we need to vote on getting a consultant?
I, I don't, I think it's a consensus everybody here, so I will take, you know, accept that as a consensus, and I'll move towards doing that, and we'll address that. Paying, and that, and another resolution. Yeah, I don't like that, if I cannot have resolution to do that. So if everybody feel comfortable with that, again, opt out, fine with it, opt in, fine with it, you know, I, I'm not trying to do anything to make anybody feel more uneasy, or ridiculous, you offer them money, then you insult people, or you're trying to bribe anybody, not trying to do that. That was just suggested in the beginning, I don't know that that's a great idea, although I, I think if they tried it, they would be happy with it. So, with that said, let somebody else say something else.
No, just real quick, there's a prime example of what you just mentioned.
That's what I say, education.
People are educated, still are educated.
Clearly are not educated.
I'm not, I don't think anybody is.
Again, I don't know, I'd probably hold off on the 26th to the consultant review, and then we'll stay, stay off, have that, so, that meeting will not happen on the 26th, so. We'll hold off on that, we get the consultant, have the review, and then, let's make them make the presentation.
Yeah.
Anyway, and that's right, yeah, we're not in any rush, we're not trying to jam anything down, let's take the time, let's, let's, write it out, let's, like Mr. Scott said, take a deep breath, relax, try to do what's best for everybody, that's all we're trying to do.
We don't rush, don't make mistakes.
That's good.
You know, right.
All right, so we discussed that one to that. But I'm glad we did. Ultimately, ultimately, that's what we're here for, and I know it's not always pleasant for everybody, but it's good to see good things come out of the, the discussion. We need to make improvements, and I, I don't take it personally.
Thank you for voicing your concerns, Riley.
And we're beginning to clear the air too.
Yeah, so that's good, we got to move forward, so that's, sometimes we have to do that. So, changes in term of office for mayor and county council. I'm sure who has to have this discussion.
Just real quick, the prior council all voted on it twice to get it on the ballot, previous administration got the ball twice to get it on the ballot. Some of you guys, you want to bring it up?
I could talk about this a little bit. That's exactly what I was going to say, I think you guys voted on this more than once.
Correct.
Ultimately, you know, it's, it's a local law like anything else that would be proposed.
It's going to come up with taxpayers that vote on this, not.
Right.
We're just making a recommendation to get it on the ballot.
Right, right. Even if you pass it, yeah, exactly, there are things that are mandatory, thrown in the public, there are things that are, permissive, where you can, the public can ask to do that, but if you guys were to pass this proposal, I think the time threshold is no less than 60 days, so we're down to wire, if you guys want to pass this local law, I think that's why it probably came, to get it on the ballot in the general election. Process is complicated, it's just a matter of time. And for what it's worth, that paperwork is ready to go, and you guys want to.
And then it's also submitting the legal documentation to the state, right? Isn't there something that needs to be?
After the fact, right, so if, if the general public were to approve this proposition, it would just be, that would be like the final check in the box, and we'd have to file that with the secretary of state with the 20 days, just like if there was something that you had to pass here today, we had 20 days.
I thought the public actually voted on this. A referendum, it becomes a referendum in the November election, so we have to put this on our next agenda, I'm saying, previously, I thought they.
No, they never put on the ballot. Never got on the ballot.
So you have to re-vote.
So is that the, but you feel the same.
Yeah, I mean, the two years, it was tough, by the time you get rolling, you just get something done, and then you have to campaign.
I've had, I've had two issues in three years now that I can't, still can't resolve, it's a water issue, it's a speed zone issue by bonuses, that, and still working, just can't, you don't have enough time.
Right, I agree.
You don't have enough time, it's not there, it's constituents.
And I think the constituents are smart enough, you know, to put the best choice in there. And, you know, honestly, if one of us screws up, they're going to have us out at the end of whatever term it is, and if we're doing the right thing, we need a little more time to do the right thing.
Excellent, we'll put that on the next agenda.
Okay, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, you want, want to get that on there, just in case.
Yeah, we'll get it on, we'll get it on, and then you'll file it.
That's right.
Don't miss that.
Bob Ray, Mr. Ray, you're here to talk about these code changes, please.
I am.
Just to the heads up, so he's going to give you a little information, there'll be a packet coming out as well, shortly afterwards, to discuss what the code changes, but this is going to give you an idea of what the codes, the codes are going to, this will be coming to the next meeting for a vote.
Okay.
Thank you for getting me on the discussion agenda tonight. I've been trying to change my codes ever since we voted it in in 2019. It will help me enforce the zoning code better, and makes it easier for people to read and understand. I'm going to be brief tonight. I'll be sending out information, the details to you later this week. I'll also send the report, county planning reviewed it probably the third time last month, so I'll send you their report, and our planning commission will review it later this month, so you'll get their recommendation on these changes. Primarily, they're just changing, I'm correcting mistakes, I'm working on definitions, I'm working with the tables to make them easier to understand. As far as actual content, I'll be, I'm looking at design standards that were put in our last zoning code, and, and you've got a chance to read those and see if you think they make sense. I'm looking at parking, changing some of the parking regulations, nothing monumental, addressing maximum parking amounts, and making sure our requirements are equal for underoccupied and rental properties. I'll be addressing signs, nothing, again, monumental there, some clarifications. And the last item is animals, from a request from the SPCA to have a permit, like the exotic pet permit, so that people can have, in special cases, more than three dogs, or more than four cats, if the situation calls for it. So, we'll be getting more information.
And again,
Yes.
No, no, okay. I just also want to talk about the, don't forget any names for anybody who want, or names you have for being on the committee for the for the mental registration and all that stuff, so. Please email me those names, and I'll start, I'm going to start finding people who have some names on my phone, so I'm going to start finding those people that to get that education, so we can get that up early. Please email me this week if you can, so I'd like to start the next week. Last thing, I hate to do this, it's our first one, but we need to, we have a, I'd like to get a motion for executive session, because we have to discuss personnel lawsuit that we have, and there will not be any action taken after this, so if you would like to leave, that's okay. We'll just agenda the, like, the, updated, maybe we're not taking action. Yeah, no, so just an update for personnel lawsuit that we have, and so we're going to executive session to do that, and come out and agenda.
I'll second.
Now, we're going to executive session. Councilor's going to stay here. Oh, we go across the hall, that's all.
It is all.
We're still thinking about it. I'm listening outside.
We'll be back.